Seven o'clock, so I will go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. Before it begin, the first item we'll do is have a call to order. I'll start with everybody, Mr. Davies, am I right?
Robert Davies, all done.
Trace Tabaskam.
John Warren.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Susan Mooney.
Charlene Anderson.
Leonard Haiti, S R P C.
And Mr. Davies will be seated and voting tonight for Ms. Sandler. So he'll have full participation as well as voting, voting rights on anything we do tonight. Before we get into the public hearings, I just wanted to bring up, so I was contacted by the town administrator about some concern that, so there's, within town, there's obviously things going on with certain department positions that's totally outside the purview of the planning board, but I want to remind the board that we need to be cautious about having kind of discussion on Facebook, social media, anything like that, about cases outside the board. I don't know that any occurred, but just remind everybody that's in our bylaws. We gotta be, try to remain impartial as much as possible and refrain from any kind of comment, questions, things like that about specific cases that are before us. And with that, I also want to remind the public that Facebook, anything like that, the town does not have an official Facebook page or anything like that, so any comments on Facebook do not get to this board. If you have comments for a specific case, questions, things you'd like us to consider, please either appear at the public hearing or submit them by either written documentation through email or postal service to the land use clerk for inclusion with public comment for cases so that they can be considered with, with, with the case. Again, Facebook, social media, it's great, but it's not the place for, for planning board or town business to take place. So with that, we'll move right into our public hearings and I appreciate your patience. We, the first case tonight is a continued case, twenty-three dash zero zero five dash S I T Nottingham Business Park, one forty-five Old Turnpike Road. Application from G M two associates on behalf of Nottingham Business Park to complete construction of one hundred seventy-six thousand square foot building, paved access drives, parking area, stormwater management systems, et cetera. We've received communication from the applicant on this that they would not be here tonight. They were waiting, I believe, the information back from the design, I'm sorry, development of regional impact comment to potentially incorporate into any, any revisions, so they did not submit any new materials within the seven day deadline. Alana, did they, did they get back with like a date and time certain that they preferred to be on for the continuation?
No, not yet.
Okay, but it's my understanding that they did want to be continued, not withdrawing.
I believe they're gonna wait for the engineering review from C M A and I don't know if they'll be able to get that within the next two weeks.
Yeah, so, so we did get a.
That's been started though?
We have the quote from the engineering firm, which we always, we generally practice have provided to the applicant so they can review it. So we've submitted it on to the applicant. I don't know if they've given any feedback on it.
We won't get feedback, an approval for that for days. The owner is away.
Okay. So given that, obviously that's gonna delay timelines on this. I think the second meeting in June, that's only two weeks away. I would say that's not gonna be a fit for this. I would say the first meeting in July would probably be the best, the better continuing date for that.
First meeting in July.
First meeting in July, yeah.
Sorry, I don't know what I said, but.
July twelfth, which is July twelfth according to Mr. McKinnon.
Can I ask a question? So we submitted the plan to C M A even though there was a lot of inaccuracies in the narrative that were not clear?
Yeah, we submitted for quote review to, yeah.
Okay, but not for them to review it yet because I thought the applicant was gonna come back with like clarifying a lot of the narrative.
We can, we can ask for clarification on that before that they submit, that they, they updated prior to the actual review occurring, yeah. So right now, as we have from C M A, it was a quote for, for what they would expect the scope of a review to cost.
Okay.
So that's not gonna, I don't see that changing based on updates of narrative, updated plans or anything like that. But it's a good point. Yes, that's something we should clarify before we say yes to C M A. And then we do have the development of regional impact response from Stratford Regional Planning Commission. That's everybody's packet, so just familiarize yourself with that before the next meeting. There's a letter from Butter as well that wasn't able to attend tonight, so that's another item to, to look at. So it sounds like, would anybody like to make a motion to continue to July twelfth with deliverables one week ahead of that?
I moved. I'll second. Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock, deliverables by the fifth.
By the fifth.
So we have a motion by Ms. Bascom and a second by Ms. Mooney to continue this case to July twelfth at seven P M. With deliverables one week ahead of time, which would be July fifth. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? No, the motion carries seven zero.
So they're even gonna be running up tight even if they get sign off next week to C M A. C M A is not gonna be able to turn around a review, so.
Yeah, we usually like to continue cases till, I don't know, early as possible.
Yeah, no, I know there's public comment on it too, so I don't want the public hearing open at some point.
Yeah. So we'll move on to case number twenty-three dash zero zero six dash S I T Dow Retail Store, two fifty-five Old Turnpike Road. Application from Vina Dow requesting change of use for currently empty rental space to a retail store, which will be ups, be selling upcycled furniture, handcrafts, vintage items. There will be a showroom, workspace, office and storage areas. Crafting classes are planned to be held on site as well. Property located at two fifty-five Old Turnpike Road Nottingham, Hampshire, identified as tax map sixteen, lot number seven. Is there anybody here for this case? You can come on up to the table and you can bring out a chair up too if you're a part of it.
As a partner.
Sorry, there's usually two chairs there. So if you could just identify yourselves.
Vina Dow, Northwood, New Hampshire.
Sharia Smith, Northwood, New Hampshire.
And then if you could just give us a quick, so the way we usually do this is do a quick kind of synopsis, summary of what you're looking to do and then we'll bring it back to our, our cert writer that has done a review of the application. We'll discuss it and then we'll get into more details.
Okay, but as you said, we've leased the space for two years, the building for two years.
Okay.
And we're rehabbing it inside of course and going to the front end where the windows are will be showroom. We have a middle space that will be work area and a storage area, office. That's, that's about it. We have parking for a ton of people. Hopefully we have a ton of people show up.
Anything you'd like to add?
Nope, what she said was correct.
Ms. Randy, you've had a chance to review the application. I know you submitted a, provide us with a letter of review. Did you want to discuss any of that?
Yeah, I, I think by and large what they submitted is acceptable to, in terms of completeness, but the, you know, the plan was hand drawn and so the, which is, you have, I've seen you accept that before, but there's usually a list of waivers attached to it. You know, I think you can review based on what they're looking to do. It's, it's an existing building. All the work is gonna be interior. It does not appear to, I mean, it's gonna change the nature of the building in terms of traffic or any types of impacts, but in terms of something that's completeness, I think that's what the board decided. They wanna see a waiver request form acknowledging what's not there, but beyond that, I, I, yeah, I think you have enough to review. So that could be maybe like a condition of approval or something to that effect.
What would the waiver that they need?
Yes, that would be my question.
The, everything, the, the site plan is a hand drawn plan.
We've run into this with the change of use. Basically every, most change of uses run into this where it's, there's, you know, anything engineering related, I mean, kind of rattle them off, but.
They'll do a change.
Right, that's the, that's the issue where we don't have a change of use application. Apparently there's gonna be stuff that is not applicable, which was marked on the checklist I know as well. Some's not applicable.
The building was a cost sale place, so that's retail, so what we're doing is retail too, so I don't know. Just smaller stuff.
Yeah.
I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, so I got you.
A strict interpretation.
I got you.
I pitch him, you hit him, you know?
So, so for, for all intents and purposes, application completeness seems to be there for what this is intending.
For what their request is, yes.
So that'd be the first kick. So my positive action would be a motion, application completeness.
I'll make a motion that case number twenty-three dash zero zero six S I T be deemed complete.
Second.
So it's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Mooney, that the application is complete. Any further discussion on that? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, so what that does is formally allows us to have like higher level discussion. We personally have to act on the application. And then we can kind of, now we got more back and forth.
Want me to get the other piece out of the way?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that case number twenty-three dash zero zero six S I T is not a development of regional impact.
Second.
So that's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion also carries seven zero. Okay, now we got a little more discussion.
I think the one thing that I was kind of just, was kind of curious about is the relationship of this property with the property next door to it. Looks like there's a diner there or something.
It's a bagel place.
I'm gonna weigh five hundred pounds in two years.
Delicious bagel place.
Oh my god, yes. And we have to smell it every day.
Oh, awful.
Is, is it joint ownership, like is the property owned by the same people?
Property is owned by the same person.
But my understanding that they're in Northwood?
Yes, they're in Northwood, we're in Nottingham, yes.
The town lies between the buildings.
Yeah, that's how I understand it. And everybody's got their own separate parking?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, it looks like everything acts independently of the two. That was, I just, a clarification. I thought I understood it, but I just wanted to make sure.
They don't have their own independent driveway though. It's only one driveway.
No, there's one driveway, yes.
Yeah. Curb cut is off Cooper Hill or.
That's a Cooper Hill.
I was told by the owner that she has a curb cut, like she can do a curb cut out front, but it's very expensive and she's probably not gonna do it. And if that curb cut was used, you would have to come in that way, go around the back of the building and out the other driveway so that you wouldn't interfere with the in and out of the bakery.
Right on before.
If it was permitted, I highly doubt, D O T produce.
Well, she told me, you know, grain of salt.
Yeah, that's a terrible intersection. One thing too, and that area the state's been looking at for years, so not that, I don't, what, what's being proposed here in the scope and scale that you mentioned so far, you know, I don't think that would be a plausible expense or, or request. And I don't think the D O T would, I think would make that area worse with traffic. All right, so, Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Randy, did you have other comment on that?
You know, they, they mentioned hours. And this is just to sort of clarify if anything should change, what, how do we handle this? If they wanted to go later into the evening or something for hours for some of these classes, they need to come back before us or can we, you know, is that something that they can, is that a choice that they can make? Because they only say they're going until five P M. Do they host classes at six, seven, you know, when people are off work and stuff?
Those are one of my questions, yeah.
We would.
I don't have a problem with it. I just more like, I don't wanna have them start coming back to us.
Right.
You know, or how do you wanna handle it? I mean, save yourself.
We are planning on having classes. We plan on Saturday in the daytime, probably have a class and then probably one night through the week. If we did do night classes, it would be in the evening, one night a week.
Yeah, so I think, I think, so I think to Ms. Randy's point is oftentimes with businesses, we like to set some boundaries within them so that there's something measurable so that, especially if they bought residential areas, you know, but there's something measurable that, see it's a size, a scope, hours, whatever, there's a method to kind of come back and get a revised site plan. So, but within that, what we've generally done is try to have it be as reasonable as possible, like, you know, not just like it's scary right now, but like, okay, allow for some, some growth. Let's definitely mindful of those other pieces. So I think like the ten to five, if I'm kind of interpreting correctly, would probably be too restrictive.
Well, ten to five is when we'll be open, four days a week, Thursday through Sunday. And then if we had classes, it would probably be one of those nights.
Yeah.
Probably a Thursday.
Or a Saturday, or Saturday.
Or Saturday afternoon.
I think what we've done. How much would it, how much would it be for just to change the application to eight o'clock at night?
Well, I think we're gonna.
And we can change it as part of our, yeah, we can just change that.
We tell you it's eight o'clock at night, then you should have no problem that you can have your classes at five o'clock and you'll be fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's where I was gonna go with it.
And still have your shop open.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we could, yeah, we could.
So we're gonna ask if you wanted to add your operating hours. You don't have to, but we're asking.
But we don't have to work until eight o'clock.
We're not gonna check.
You do not have to.
No.
You can, you can.
Well, what we'll do is we'll send a mannequin in the window and pretend we're open.
We're saying it's okay if you wanna be open until eight o'clock to have your classes and stuff.
Now, what about nine o'clock? What about nine o'clock?
Normally I would say eight, like eight AM to nine P M would be like a pretty normal.
Most go till eight thirty and nine o'clock.
Fine, due to be on that, that's when you get more into like concern of noise, things like that, if there's anything outdoor, you know, that kind of thing, so, but I mean, they are on.
Lighting too.
Let's put, let's put perspective on why they're disturbing the traffic. So another thing, I know, so I don't know if the car dealership ever even ended up operating because if we had a conditional approval, if I remember correctly, for that, one of those conditions was some, was like fencing or something installed, like solid fencing to be installed to buffer the properties behind it, the house behind it. I know I've been by there, I've seen some fencing, I can't remember.
There's, there's stockade fencing on one side, on the right hand side of the building.
Yeah, they finally did put up that, that.
Let's guess, I just saw it this morning, there's stockade fencing on the east side.
Did they ever plant any trees? They were blocking the land?
No, trees weren't planted.
But I get it, this is a different operation. So there was a different noise level, I was anticipating with that because they were gonna do some repair and things like that, so there was a different noise level anticipated as well. So there was some of that, was for that, but that might be part of the conversation with the building inspector too. If you haven't had one yet, make sure, because I believe someone else might have looked at it and that was a holdup for them. Because it was a prior, prior agreed to a condition.
The other thing on that one was there was a parking plan, which that, to me, that should have been provided to these folks on that case as well as some signage requirements and things.
So I believe this half of the parking lot is paved, the other half is dirt.
The front, in front of our building, our lot is paved. She says she's gonna pave the other part this summer, so.
Turns to dirt as you go around the side.
The Northwood side, you mean?
The Northwood side.
Yeah.
That's dirt.
I need to.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be already welcomed. That, that was kind of a concern mine, that's outside of Nottingham. It's just getting into it, it's, access can be pretty tricky.
Yeah.
Until they regrade it so often, but I think to Ms. Anderson's point was, I know when this was, the car dealership, they had kind of outlined parking spaces or what they proposed, we got a max kind of, where vehicles would be to kind of, because they control flow around, so like you can drive all the way around it.
No, no, we, I'm not gonna allow that. I don't want cars running around.
Also residential parking back there too.
There's residential parking and then there's dogs and kids and, you know.
We always go around the front of the building and use, not parking on the back. We don't go past them.
Yes, yeah.
Dogs, kids.
Yeah, so maybe to that effect.
And nobody else is going to because we park right here and can't get through.
As I say, this might be something that the owner, talk to the owner about since the access towards that area would be outside of Nottingham. It's just direct signs, it says residential parking only or something that way tries to direct people or businesses to flow to the right.
Yeah, we plan on having a sign on the corner of the building saying the shop parking here to direct them.
And when you mentioned, remember they've got Bervich that doesn't mention them. Like workspace, things like that, are you? Like groundwater protection is a big piece, so especially with wells in town. Plan on doing any kind of like chemical type stuff like, you know, stripping?
When I say workspace, it means making gift baskets.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna put chemicals in them.
Not planning on like any.
It's just small things that we would create to sell in the shop, that's all.
Received any comment from the town department specific to this either? You know, code would be separate from us, that's outside our purview and things of that nature.
Met a couple. I noticed there's already existing lights there. I don't know if, I assume your building would have control over both exterior, obviously interior.
We're gonna have to put in two new outside lights in the parking area, preferably one out in the front area and one in the back.
Okay, because it looks like there's some, like a mix of every type of possible light.
They don't work. They have to go, they're just, it's just madness.
What's that, the name that you put out there? From the, the name of the poles and what's the name of that? Are you talking about you want out there?
Oh, the, I'm gonna talk to public service and, or whatever it is now and see if we can get the dusk to dawn lights, twelve of them out there.
That's good, yeah, because that's.
Because the other ones don't work, they're just garbage.
That's what I looked at today. I mean, I know I've, I've never looked at that. I drive, obviously I've driven past it at night. I've never looked, but you know, there's some of those old style yellow spotlights, but I was gonna say if you were gonna do any lights. We just recommend the kind of downcast style, so most of your commercial lights are now, or they're trying not to cast light out like a spotlight.
Does public service know that? They know how to?
Code, you'd probably go through code enforcement if you're trying to get, like he'll, there's a, in our zoning ordinance, there's a section, or maybe site, sue would know, the lighting, is that zoning?
This comes through the, I'll link in the conservation commission. So you go to the conservation commission page and there should be a link somewhere for recommended lighting.
If you come into the land use office, I think usually, or reach out to code enforcement, they'll be able to kind of help you direct to that.
Okay.
The key word, the key word, if you call somebody about lighting to ask, if you've mentioned the word like dark sky compliant, that's the industry term and they've honestly changed the term so many times that nobody really knows what the current one is, but.
That's because of the birds.
It is in zoning, so same thing, and if you're planning any kind of signs, we have, we regulate those within the zoning too, so it's.
And we are gonna put a sign.
We'll be controlled a little bit about, what's that?
We're gonna put a sign up.
Yeah, so there's, there's some.
There's poles there. I mean, there's, yeah, there, I don't know.
So there is some information about where signs can be, whether it's size of tape sign, so it's like the big L E D ones that doesn't look like you probably knew, but it's, they're super bright, those apparently aren't allowed.
There'll be no lights on this side.
To sometimes you front of the state purview of their right of way, but if it's in their right of way, that's their purview. If our purview is.
Are you saying you would use the existing one that's actually on the Northwood side or is there, I guess I haven't looked, there's actually one in front of you?
There's one on the Nottingham side that we would use and it's just two four by four poles that are sticking up there.
So again, code enforcement, building inspector would just.
Okay, so we have to do that too before we put a sign up?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a separate sign permit, right? Office has never had to do it, but.
Certain sizes are.
Is that certain sizes? Okay, yeah, so there is, there's a limit, so again, if you ask the building inspector, code enforcement, there's just a limit on how big it can be. I don't think you're gonna exceed it.
It's all solicited in our zoning.
Correct, it's all in the zoning, so, but if you need help locating it.
Pages twenty-nine through thirty-one in our zoning, thirty-two, thirty-three. So page twenty-nine of our updated zoning ordinance talks about signs and then the next couple pages.
So I can come down?
Outdoor lighting, and the best practices there.
Before I have a sign made, I should come down and what size it is.
Because Alana has office hours and I'm sure, we have hard, I assume we have hard copy these or if not. Yeah, a couple pages or something like that.
I'm sure you're gonna make the sign quite pleasant for what this needs to be.
All it's gonna say is shop two fifty-five, unique, upcycled, vintage.
Love it already.
Usually if the size, usually if the size is just replacing what's there.
Yeah, it's going right into the same, same space.
There's a big, there's a big sign there that's swinging back and forth and she's having that taken down. If you're looking at that, that's.
That's ugly as sin. Have you seen that horror thing?
It's probably.
So that's good, yeah, that'll be, I was curious if you're gonna have any outdoor lights, like, you know, security.
Well, we thought for the winter it would be nice for us wandering out, you know, to have the dawn to dusk thing.
That's good to hear that you have some kind of new ones there, more reliable lighting, I guess.
Yeah, that's, that's theirs.
It did have a note here about A D A parking and this is more so just to make sure the site's compliant with A D A. You'd probably be in the requirement of minimum one space. There is a ramp, there's a little ramp there on the corner, so the site complies, but there's no signage obviously on the site for anything right now, but.
Handicapped sign, stick it in the ground where you want it to park?
Yeah.
I think the way the building is actually, I think there's like a little notch where, you know what I'm talking about on the, if you're looking at the building on the right side, is that your main entrance?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think there's a notch there that you, you can hang, the signs can go on a building as well.
Oh, they can?
They can be, as long as they're in front of the space.
I think there's room right, that ramp is here and then the glass dots, but I think there's enough space there to put a handicap so that.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever you wanna do, yeah.
Spot for that.
And so that kind of went to, I mean, after, there's plenty of parking obviously in the front and the side.
In the back.
Yeah, and so I guess it more went to, I know there was a parking plan at one time they provided. If you do classes, do you have any idea how, like would you cap it at a certain number of people? I mean, probably.
Probably no more than ten.
Okay, that's us. Certainly room for ten cars, assuming one per person, so.
You're running just occupancy side, that comes from the fire department, max occupancy, so I'm sure that will control the parking and.
Other place I have to go and ask.
Yeah, and the other thing was just, I didn't know, you've already mentioned some of the stuff, looks like the land, the landowners planning on some paving, maybe not on your site, but next to you, and landscape, but I didn't know, I didn't know what that old approval had, but.
She has mentioned.
It's an existing site that's more, you're more stable than the bakery and that thing gets torn up pretty quickly.
Yes, that's pretty level.
Yeah, he does it, he has a tractor and he does it regularly.
I know, he just did it. It was a little hectic getting in and out of there.
Yes, it is.
It's very bumpy.
But the bagels are worth it.
Hey, if you complain that they bug your head, you might just pay in bagels and pay off the wire.
I'm trying to run a, I'm, I'm trying to work a deal where I have a tab.
There you go. Yeah, the coffee's good too.
Bagels and coffee.
Cool.
Also, she has said that they're, she's having the wiring taken down overhead and put underground.
Oh, okay.
Along with that big sign and the poles and all that's gonna go.
Makes it more code compliant, so.
And on the, on the Northwood side, I have called state and whined about that swampish gutterish thing that's out in front of that building, but that's not really my problem, but it is, you have to look at it before you get to the building, so it's a mess.
Yeah, that's probably more.
But that's Northwood, that's the Northwood side, that's not.
That, or the property owners.
It's probably a well and so it can't.
It might, so things, oftentimes prior to site plans, things like that, and I don't know if it's the case here, but, you know, so now when a brand new site is gonna get developed, we do drainage studies, they have to account for a lot of things and, you know, retention areas are all engineered.
Probably not, a lot more involved now than it was fifty years ago.
Yeah, so it's possible that, that's a byproduct and those areas, I don't know, that falls to the purview of the state or the property owner.
Maybe they'll get taken care of, they rebuild the intersection, so then.
Yeah.
That would be nice if they would do that.
Talked about for a long time.
I know. Probably talked about a long time. That's it.
Any, any other comment from the board?
Do you want a big approval?
Make a motion that I think the, the only thing I think we had for potential conditions, I mean, applicant will, will be cognizant of the lighting side, the sign ordinance they're aware of, I don't think those are conditions, you know, something to trigger, you know, the operating hours, which I think, mentioned like eight to nine, eight AM to nine P M.
Ten to, ten to five or ten to nine if we had class, a class, one night a week.
Just do ten to nine? I don't care.
Just open up eight to nine, that way they can start early and go late, doesn't matter.
And I think it's, that's a, both are within business times. And do, I think, I'm just looking on lawyers. And do, I think, I'm still gonna blow yours, actually.
Think in terms of the waiver request too, it's one of those unique where it's our site plan checklist, and obviously if we had a separate change of use application, yeah, I think our checklist would be a lot shorter, yeah, cuz it's always assumed that there's not much going on, so, I don't know, I mean, I wasn't gonna.
What are the, what are the waiver things? What does that mean? I don't know what that is.
Basically, within our, our subdivision regulations, our site plan regulations, we have criteria that are supposed to be met with any new application.
Oh, so if I apply for something, you could give me a variance to it, or?
It's not a variant, it's, it's, cuz it's so.
Waiver under.
Control part of it, it's saying, well, we don't feel that we need to submit these items, or they're not applicable to this.
Okay.
So we're requesting to waive the requirement, so all these different sections, but.
Okay.
Where this is an existing building, and it's, it's basically a minor change of use, um, I think we have the capacity to, to handle it at this level, based on the application and the way it's been filled out.
Thank you for explaining that.
Of course.
Uh, anything else before I throw a motion up there? I'll make a motion to approve case number twenty-three dash zero zero six S I T, um, with standard conditions of approval in terms of fees paid, um, necessary coordination with, um, code enforcement in the town, just as, as you would opening a business, and, uh, with hours of operation from eight to nine PM, eight AM to nine PM.
Did you wanna say something about the lighting and the signage?
Well, the signage there, they're not any compliance until they void the.
I was gonna say, cuz we usually don't regulate signage, um, so it's.
We'll just, uh.
I can, I can just say reference, reference zoning ordinance for sign and lighting or, uh, regulations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Baskin, uh, Mrs. Baskin, sorry, uh, any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, uh, motion carries seven zero, you're.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I look forward to the gift baskets.
We're opening the second week in July, so please come and visit us, you don't have to buy anything, just come and look.
Thank you.
Get my bagels and I'll walk.
Get your bagels, walk, walk over, no, you better drive over because.
Take care.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other, other business, um, we did receive a letter from, from Ms. Jones, uh, resigning from her alternate position.
Okay.
So, I think, just a motion to formalize the acceptance of that and thanking her for her, uh, her, 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 her term with us is, um, is in order, I don't think there's any more discussion to be had.
I'll make a motion that we accept Sandra Jones', um, resignation.
Second.
Uh, motion by, uh, Ms. Anderson, a second by Mrs. Baskin, uh, to accept Mrs. Joan, uh, Ms. Jones' resignation, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
What a rebel.
Six zero one, and again, I just wanna thank Ms. Jones for, uh, for participating and being willing to, to serve as an alternate for a while and on some of the subcommittees for us. I believe she's still on the budget committee, or she's been on a few, so, um, with that said, we're always accepting, uh, additional alternates, if anybody would like to apply, just send a letter of inquiry to, uh, Land Use Card, please. Even if you're just considering it, come on in, have a conversation, and, um, and we're very lucky to have Mr. Davies for as many years as we have, and is consistently, uh, as he's been a member here, so, but it always helps to have more and more, so, especially as we've had vacancies in the, the board for some meetings.
Uh, Sherry submitted a similar request or a statement that she's gonna stick to.
I get that, is that?
She said, she sent it to me, I forwarded it out to you.
Okay.
Oh, she said, she sent it in, um.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is she officially resigning today, or?
Okay, right, well, we can, I didn't get a chance to see it, but if that's, if we have that as a written request in writing, um, I think we can act on that as well, so that sounds like we have a request from Ms. Sandler, uh, to resign, uh, her position as well as a, as a member. Discussion on that or make a motion.
Will you be appointing somebody if they wanna become a full-time member for the rest of her term?
We will go back and check the rules for vacancies, but I believe.
Yes, we can.
I've, I've had some experience, so I would say we probably.
We would appoint them only to the.
To fill her term.
No, until the next election. When there's a vacancy to an elected position, it's, you fill their seat until the, the next election.
And then it can be a short term.
To a short term.
Yeah, just to fill out this, yeah, and if, whatever remains.
We, we ran into it before, so it's, so at the next election, you have two, three-year positions and two-year position, if I believe it is.
Yes.
So you have two-year position.
So that would also need to, people reach out, the public reach out about that as well, if they're interested to be considered.
Yes, yeah, so then we would put that on like maybe the next agenda, um, open it up to anybody, including current alternates, uh, that might be one of the, the board members, uh, not putting any pressure on, just saying that's.
Well, he's getting his seat over there, he's ready to jump in it.
Yeah.
I'll just put it on announcements right on the town webpage, right up front.
So would anybody like to make a motion, uh, regarding Ms. Sandler's resignation?
I, I move that we accept Ms. Sandler's resignation as a full planning board member.
I second.
That's a motion by Ms. Mooney, a second by Mr. Davies, to accept the resignation of Ms. Sandler as a planning board member, um, any further discussion on that? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Motion carries seven, uh, seven zero, and likewise, I'd like to thank Ms. Sandler for, for, uh, for willing to, to step up and be a member for a little while, um, and, uh, and then, or willing to step down if it wasn't a good fit for time commitments, I'm not certain what the reasoning was, but it's always good for people to, to be honest when, when things change for them, um, so at that, we will put it on our next agenda for June twenty-eighth, to potentially have that as an option to potentially appoint someone to that seat. If we don't do it, the next meeting would be in July, and we can post on the website that we're looking for, um, anybody that would like to consider, be considered, to please submit a letter or to the Land Use Card. Be considered as a, uh, for that role for the remainder of the, the year.
Will they not be able to just show up at the meeting if, if I apply?
They could do that as well, it's always good to kinda submit something through to make sure we're aware, but yes, you could show up at the meeting as well. The meeting that's scheduled for. All right, public comment, we always reserve a portion of the night for people to come in, uh, the public to come in and, and just ask us questions, not everybody's familiar with planning and zoning. Uh, we can't answer case-specific items at this part, portion of the meeting, but we do encourage people to come in and, and just talk to us if they have questions, nobody here, so we'll move on. Approval of minutes, we have three sets of minutes, we can tackle them individually, all, uh, or whatnot, but we have the minutes of May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, the site walk minutes of May seventeenth, and then, uh, minutes of May twenty-fourth. I had just a few edits. If I can jump in, I'll jump in, uh, the minutes of May tenth, I just had two, and Alana, I'll hand this to you afterwards, um, line fifty-seven, oh, I didn't specifically add it, there was a question on that. I think by Ms. Mooney, is to new wetlands, in the clarification on that, I think was, there were, I don't know what the proper terminology that might have been used, and maybe, um, I know Mr. McKinnon was recused from that case, but this isn't his bearing, so it's just minutes. What, so basically, I believe they were referring to wetlands that were installed to mitigate other wetlands that had been dredged and filled. So when they're saying new wetlands, it's not wetlands that they are proposing to create, it was wetlands that prior plan through DES approval had dredged and filled and created new wetlands. So I don't know what the proper term is for that, but they're not new wetlands, they're.
That's, yeah, that was my point, you know, they needed to be more defined as to what they, how they were identified.
You're referring to the statement, the minutes as is, that say they do not need to fill any more wetlands.
Nine fifty-seven, oh.
This is the statement.
Oh. This might have been a pre, they've been edited, I think, since then. Those are probably pre-edited.
What if we call them replacement wetlands, just that they're new.
So. The term has changed because you can't do what they did anymore, the state stopped allowing, you can't just build new wetlands on sites somewhere else to impact wetlands over here. That used to be a policy that the state doesn't use anymore, um, it, I mean, the simplest term is, they were man-made constructed wetlands as part of a mitigation plan.
Yeah.
But, and from the looks of it, I mean, I've seen them, they, they look like wetlands, and that's what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to, uh, operate and act like it, but, um. I think what's trying to be said is, any previously approved mitigation was completed, and that's, so they, they would have constructed that to satisfy whatever permit requirements they had at the time.
Yeah.
And then no additional, really, no additional items need to be addressed.
The way it originally read was they do not need to fill any more wetlands, and so, I guess we would get rid of any kind of mention of new wetland.
I guess the statement was just that they do not propose any new wetland impacts.
Yeah.
On this, relative to the project.
I think that's, that's all I would say, line fifty-seven.
Couldn't that line, that statement, they do not need to fill any more wetlands, be just deleted, cuz it's, it doesn't play a role in that?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Or you could just change it to no additional wetland impact or anticipated in the project.
I think it's a wetlands and we have so much.
That's fine, yeah, but that changes that whole sentence, I mean.
Yeah, no additional wetland impact. Close. Carries the same intent. Just reads clearer.
Mm-hmm, oh, I think it's much clearer.
All right, so that's what we'll say on that one, uh, line eighty-one, one eighty-one, and again, this doesn't line up with, these are the older sets, uh, although I'm going by Alana, the ones that you sent out most recently with the agenda, but we, we would just remove the word unnecessary.
Did you say line one eighty-one?
Yeah, but it's not gonna match up, these, so.
No, I was just gonna say that, I don't even have one for eighty-one.
I must have printed these and put the binders a long time before.
So I'm going off the draft that was sent out to us, um, with the agendas and such, that was it for that, for that date. The site plan minutes, I didn't have any changes for, and then the minutes of May twenty-fourth, I had, um, and again, these are off the edited minutes, Alana. So line one fifteen, um, I'll tell you in a sec. Line one fifteen. Yeah, so, we'll amend that to say two test pits per four K area are required, only one is shown at this time for some of the proposed lots, cuz it wasn't every lot, um. Line one forty-one, change site plan to design review.
What, what line is that, one forty-one?
Forty-one. Because it was a, a design review previously.
Oh, design, okay.
Uh, line one forty-five. Amend to say. So it says, Mr. Barry responded that none of the lots, so, Mr. Barry responded that none of the proposed open space, none of the proposed lots in the open space plan are in the outdoor protection zone. So Mr. Barry responded that none of the lots in the open space plan.
Yeah, O S D though, open space development, that's what the title is.
True, or O S D.
Fantasy.
Are an outdoor protection zone, love them, they're the one from there. Just two more, line three fifty-five, uh.
Three fifty-five?
Three fifty-five, yeah, wait, wait, far, uh, where it says E, uh, Mr. McKinnon said that the CUP meets off right here, reception of E that would be met. I think we continue to on to say, uh, it says it would be met, would be added as part of the bonding process for the proposed road. And we do clarify that.
Which is a subsequent item.
A few lines down, too. And my last one, line four seventy-five, this is, uh, instead of Mark, what was your, what was your planning, it's, uh, Mark Fugere, F O U G E R E, Fugere planning. So that's probably my enunciation that night, it was late in the meeting. And that's all I had for the three sets. Second.
Are you ready for mo- a motion?
Let's see, bagels, has comments, questions, or edits? See, non, motion, great.
Okay, um, I move that we accept the minutes of May tenth, two thousand twenty-three, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three.
As amended.
As amended, we don't always put that in there.
So we have a, a motion by Ms. Mooney, is there?
Second.
A second, a second by Mr. McKinnon, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed, uh, motion carries seven zero. Staff board, uh, select board staff board member updates, we'll, uh, start with Mr. Davies and go around the room.
Nothing new for me.
I have been contacted by SRPC and, uh, will be attending a meeting, and it's next week, and then, uh, the annual meeting.
Yep, and that's, I had that, and so, um, I'm assuming that's as your roles alternate for the SRPC commission?
Correct.
So we had, a few meetings ago, we had made a motion to appoint, uh, Cheryl Smith and Mrs. Baskin, uh, as our, as a, um, for our SRPC commissioner, uh, roles, and Ms. Bas, Ms. Baskin agreed to be an alternate to serve as well. I sent a letter to the select board, they did approve it, and a letter did go back to SRPC with the forms, and it's all official now, so.
Yes, I received it, a welcome.
Thank you again for, for being willing to do that, and thank you, uh, Ms. Anderson as well, just, I know you're still in your role as well. Mr. Moran.
Uh, the last select board meeting, if you didn't watch, we had a situation, well, a guy, uh, I don't know if I've said it, I forgot his name, but about the oversalting of a road on the other side around North Case Road, uh, which we will see how it goes about. He was saying his wells were being polluted by the amount of salt use, uh, so we had studies and stuff like this, and we're actually looking more into it. We were using a private contractor for that side of the town, so they were heavily salting instead of, uh, probably plowing and stuff, so.
Kelsey Road, nice.
K, Kelsey Road, correct.
Oh, okay.
Uh, sorry, it's.
Which is the Rockford District, you, I believe, right?
So we are looking into that, that's something that we are.
Thank you.
Going to be figuring out, um, what's gonna happen with that.
There's definitely storms, they're very liberal with the, uh.
Well, well, one thing, one thing we could do is, I don't know if this is already done, but I know there's like the snow pro certification that's done through UNH for, for snow plow and snow removal companies. The benefit to them, to my understanding, is it also gives them a lot of liability protection from, at the state level.
It does, yeah.
There's like a fund, uh, so it's, has that benefit, but it's, it's there to guide them, obviously, on proper amounts of, uh, type of application of salt or brine or whatever that they have to be using in, for the storm, so that might be something that.
But the gentleman's been living there for twenty-five years, and this has recently become, become more of an issue, so we could just blame it on the guy running the truck being incompetent.
Sure.
But, we don't do that yet, so, you know, I mean.
There's a lot of factors, how close the well is, all, yeah.
Lot of different factors, look at that, and look into it, and then we had an interesting, uh, meeting, um, over off, called Dolph Dam Road, it's, uh, it's like six different names of the roads now because of the new, uh, uh, it's on the lake, Kevin Bassett owns the property. Lamprey drives one of them, and, uh, him subdividing, you know, and, you know, roads and lines going over roads and what's the width of the road has to be, since there is no definite term on how wide the road is now, on how it goes, so that's gonna be something that the board's gonna have to look into.
He came to talk to you guys about it?
Well, because we have to define what the road is before he can come into the planning board to tell you what the, we, we don't have a definition of what the, the road is. So the discussion went on about, you know, if it's, is it a subdivision, right, it's cuz if he's gonna make four lots, now that's considered a subdivision, it's not like a two lot. Right? It's cause if he's gonna make four lots, now that's considered a subdivision, it's not like a two lot, but they are town existing roads. So does he have, you know, here's the plus, you know, he has the acreage to make them all something, let's say twenty-five feet wide. But does he have to make them twenty-five feet wide, or does he have to make the lots so that the road goes down twenty-five feet wide? Lot of, uh.
I was gonna say, that's gonna be at the planning level for sure, cause there, there is stuff.
It's gonna come to you, but it's also the board of selectmen, our, our, our roads. We are the, we're the roads.
Yeah, well, that, that's.
So you're the, you're developing new roads and stuff like this, but the BOS is part of the.
We knew that was coming because the term is an as-is, so when you have as-is, it's like, okay.
We just wanna be careful with it, yeah. Knowing that something may come back before the planning board, we're supposed to be careful about.
Well, we're, right, we are, we're gonna do the due diligence to make sure that we're.
And I think this board guided it.
Comes that way.
To the select board too as well, to like have some of that conversation to.
Well, we haven't got there, cause it wasn't, he's been in front of us for conceptual reviews here in front of this board already. So we are well aware of what he's thinking, cause he already came in front of us.
So that new section of the road that was accepted by the select board, since. Yeah, we're still.
The only, the only time roads.
The only time roads have to get accepted at town meeting, so that since that section wasn't previously constructed.
Well, it technically, you could say that the road, here's another variable on it. The road was on the original plan, just was never, and there was, you could have actually passed through it with a four-wheel, you could have passed through it, just wasn't at this stage because of the growth, it wasn't considered car passable, but there is no record to say that it wasn't passable by a car in nineteen sixty-seven.
Yeah.
There's nobody around, there's, there's no pictures, there's no nothing to say what it was.
I think it goes back to.
It's not really even a road that anybody's gonna ever use. The benefit of the road for the town is the fact that now the town, I mean, again, we're talking about a hundred or two hundred feet. It makes it so that ambulances and police and everybody can now, there's two ways in, two ways out. Just like on our old planning, where before we did, uh, you know, cul-de-sacs and you couldn't do it, we always made the plans that you had to have like a horseshoe road, so you have two entrances, two outs, so that was one of the benefits of having this. Is now this old road has dual accesses in and out, which is a benefit for all public safety and stuff like that.
And that goes to the language of, I think, the interpretation we got from the town administrator at the time was because of the way it was written where it was pretty big, like the town accept these roads as is, the only thing we have to go off of, if there are record plans, okay, we have rights to that.
Yep.
But also where the road might not be built per the plan, the town also has that, so there's some great overlap and.
Right, and then where the road is now, where it was on a plan, even if it was missed from that, as well as.
We know that forever, this, this is a, this is an ongoing issue that's gonna be going on for.
Sounds like some of it's resolving, which is kinda probably good.
Well, some things are right, but so then it's just, now it's just determining what, what size road is supposed to be there. So that when the planning board, I mean, for what he comes here, for what's there, what he's doing. He wants to keep nice large lots though, that's one of the benefits. Wants to have nice acre, big lots.
He's trying to get feedback from the board of selectmen as to what they would expect for the road, but then ultimately he's gonna have to come to us to show.
What we consider the width of the road.
Gotcha.
But we don't know what we consider the width of the road because it's all different all the way down the old road. Some spots are twenty-five feet wide, some spots might be eighteen feet wide.
It's gonna end up being an application to the board.
So, but. That was our, took up pretty much most of the night. It was a short meeting, cause we had to start the meeting until seven thirty, so. Uh, there's always plenty of things going on.
Let's begin.
Um, I don't think really anything, I only think I want to mark on here, uh, we chose one of, was it one of the August meetings we chose as business only?
Do we make a motion? Yeah, to invite the ZBA, CONCOM, building inspector, town administrator.
It was August, I think.
Was it August ninth or twenty-third?
I thought it was the second one.
I think it was the second one as well.
Yes, twenty-third.
I'll confirm with the line up.
Has a letter, has a letter gone out?
It would have been a letter, just a formal invite generally. Just inviting the boards and I think we decided it would be, uh, yeah, August twenty-third, I forgot my notes. ZBA, Nottingham Conservation Commission, the building inspector, any town departments that would like to attend, um, including the, the town administrator. That'd be noticed as a joint planning board, ZBA meeting.
I did notify the ZBA at our next meeting.
I'll make sure, uh, I'll make sure something goes out. Checking the line, make sure.
And then, I don't know if you were, I know you've been the one in contact with impact fees, so.
Yeah, so.
We got some feedback on that, correct?
Yeah, so I reached out to our town administrator to see what our process moving forward is. Since we didn't budget specifically anything in our, in our budget to pay for any kind of studies. It sounds like doing a RFP or request for proposal, um, would be the course, the best course of action on this, send it out there.
To be able to budget for it.
Be able to budget for it. It's not, you know, it's not a good time to try to find money in a budget.
Can I ask Trump?
Yeah, so. So I'll work on, um, drafting that, getting that RFP process going before the next meeting in the next week. And the way I'd word it is our current impact fees for reviews with a focus primarily on fire. And again, depending on what that comes back as, and I've asked for input, is there anything in the current CIP or planned CIP, uh, that would support any impact fees for fire? If not, you know, the likely action on this board would set it to zero or a dollar, um, until such time that there is something on there and then we could have it reviewed again.
So it'll be pushed to the CIP this year, which at some point we'll have to figure out if that is falling on us or it's kept at the board's side.
Sounds like, yep. Got all my items out of, out of here, so. I do expect, at some point, I know the town administrator's got a lot on, on their plate, so they'll, uh, just kind of open invite, this case will, our cases have, we have things to have them come in and just meet the board and kind of go over, not pick a list of items that we have that we're planning on working on.
Uh, we had a Conservation Commission meeting this past Monday, and we held an election of officers. I want to thank Deb Kimball for serving as vice chair for, for, um, several terms, but she asked to step down, so Sam Demerit is still our chair. Cheryl Smith was elected to be vice chair, and I was elected secretary. We have a full board, but everybody's really busy, busy, so we're still looking for alternates on, you know, have to come to every meeting, but it's good to come so we can have a forum at times, especially in the summer. We are, are busy with our summer programs, water testing along the rivers, North River and Little River for quality, oxygen, turbidity, um, salts, and issues like that. We pick up parts of one fifty-two and one fifty-six for trash at least three times, maybe four times this summer. Trail maintenance from our public trails. They all have Aldo Leopold benches that have been constructed by members and placed on the trails for people to rest their bones as they walk along the trails. That's it.
And just like this board with the alternates, a wide variety of backgrounds is, is great, so.
Yeah.
You don't have to feel like you have to have any specific.
Everybody brings something to the table.
Yeah. Like this board, engineers, business owners, every, whole, whole gamut of people and, and all the backgrounds help to make every board stronger, so. Encourage anybody that's interested to, on any of these things, to, to just at least come in and, and talk to a board.
Nothing.
Mr. Ian?
Uh, SRPC is having their twenty twenty-three annual meeting on Thursday, June twenty-second. Uh, it's a luncheon, twenty-five dollars. Uh, you're all invited to come. It'll be in Rochester at the Governor's Inn. It's gonna start at eleven-thirty. They, um, open it up, do it like a networking thing in the beginning, and then, uh, they have lunch and they do a, like a panel with a primary, uh, a guest speaker, and this one's gonna be on planning for solar. So, uh, feel free to join us. It says registration closes today, but I'm sure you can sneak in if you need it.
Depends what's for lunch.
The, uh, I can tell you that, actually. Option one, grilled chicken with mushrooms with marsala.
Oh, there you go.
Steak tips, or the greedy toss in garlic and olive oil with seasonal vegetables.
Not bad.
Um, yeah, and this is, yeah, this is the annual luncheon that we always have, so it's a big celebration for everybody. Feel free to come by. And I do believe I sent you some information about, uh, the New Hampshire Municipal Association and some of the events that they're hosting. Uh, I sent you one about a specific event, but also just a reminder that they always do great things to prime up on just things related to being a municipal official, so feel free to check in, whether it's for the second, conservation, or all of you, there's plenty more members. Um, it's always really good to, to bone up on different things. Um, and if you can't make that, uh, they've got plenty of webinars and a great blog that just always touches on something. You can always pick a, pick a highlight out of there. I, I find, I find that very useful when I have questions. It's one of the first places I go, um, so, just, that's more of an FYI.
And, uh.
Have you had any new applications come in personally?
Does that end, can I bring up a question? Um, what do we do about amending applications that have, the board has already approved? You know, there's a gentleman, you know, something, but I don't wanna bring, I don't wanna bring up a specific one.
So theoretically, say we have an approved application, approved plan.
Yeah.
It's already met conditions, hasn't been finally approved, final approval?
I guess.
Well, even, even if it hasn't been, so I think I'm understanding the question correctly, so say the board has taken action and we voted approval of an application as, uh, not as complete, but, you know, the actual plan, and we approve with. With conditions, without conditions, either, it's already had that vote that's approved. Even if it's been, it's been signed or not signed, I think if there's a change to that, that's substantive, it's, it's, uh, it's renotice. What I was saying was from prior, uh, I asked a question for, for, so if they're non-substantive, then that, then that, this goes back to like sometimes when we have conditions, certain conditions that are set, and like an applicant might want us to say, well, can you approve it tonight with twenty different conditions? Well, if some of those change to one of those, is DOT permit can even ensure this? Where the driveway coming in, the, the state can say, well, no, we don't want it there, you need to move it over there, and you need to add all these drainage things, like if it's a substantive change to the plan, and potentially require re-notification, like hearing.
I actually ran into this on, on, on a specific project, and Blair can actually discuss it with somebody too. Um, I've had a product like this in Farmington where DOT requested changes that changed some mi- minor components of site grading, drainage design, and this was after an approval from the town of Farmington. And then, uh, Kyle, who is the contract planner technically for Farmington but works for SRPC, um, I worked, talked about with him, and he came up with something that it, he looked it up, he, he, I'm sure he could point you to maybe where it is, but.
Sure.
We essentially went in for like a compliance review, because that, it goes back to substantive is if you don't have a full-time planner, it's the board has to decide if it's substantive, so at a minimum, it can be a compliance, I think that's what it, it was a compliance review. He was able to point to something in, on RSA or something like that, but you could request a compliance review and the board, it does not need to be noticed, but then the board would determine if it is or is not, and if it is, then it would need re-noticing, and the board wouldn't take any action on it, but. There was some precedent there.
So the compliance review is just simply to determine if it's substantive or not?
Yeah, and that's like the, somebody here in the town, if, if the code enforcer was like, we had a bunch, ten conditions, he's like, well, I don't really know if they were met. Any application, I guess in theory, could be referred to the board for a compliance review.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's some precedent out there or some po- procedure for it, and I know I've done it for projects, so. That could be a recourse for something like that where there's a question around if it qualifies.
I remember one time we had a, we had approved a lotline adjustment, and then the people came back, probably like, it was like less than a, a year or something, and they didn't want the lotline adjustment, so that they wanted.
To dissolve it.
To dissolve it.
Lotline adjustments are unique though, because unlike a subdivision is live once it's approved, but lotline adjustment is not until a deed is passed, so. My understanding, on those, is until they file the deed, that lotline adjustment is not, hasn't occurred. So if they never file a deed, I think that's what, one of the cases was, people were kind of, so we voted to rescind the approval.
Right.
That make it clear for the applicant, for the individuals, which is what they kind of, they had asked for, but, um, I think we didn't have to take action, but it was good to kind of negate it, so it wasn't always like sitting out there. So kind of a non-answer, I guess, but some direction a little bit.
Yeah, I think it gives me s- something to go on, um.
The only thing is it's a different order now.
Um. That's okay though, because it's, that doesn't change.
Yeah, I think, I think. Approval. The approvals are carried with the land, right? Yeah, it's off the order. So if somebody sees something on that plan that they don't wanna comply with, uh, or have altered, then, you know, it's just.
We've had this question come a couple, few times recently, some, some were in like a, you know, something that has an HOA associated with it, and, and covenants and things of that nature too. It was like drainage, I believe, was the question, so change it. That's not even just the town level, that was actually within like their own.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's a few different things where it's hard to, to give a clear answer, but I think, um, it's not clear, so we need some additional.
Sounds like maybe you could reach out internally to.
Somebody doesn't wanna bury utilities, but they wanna keep them above, like, I feel like that, that's change.
Then, then that's actually like something in our code that's very clear as to, yeah. There's some things that are clear, the requirements, if you don't wanna comply, then you essentially have to go through a process of seeking a waiver. It's not.
But essentially you're treating it like a new application. I mean, it's not an amendment to a previous application.
That's why I think it's, that's why that.
So we don't have an amendment as a thing, so what do they submit to us? Is it just a written request, or they submit the whole shebang-a-bang, you know?
Well, it's the, you know, it, the compliance review component that I've used in the past, it's focusing on one item, or hey, here's three things that the state requested that's changed.
Yeah.
That's simpler and it's, you don't want, you know, it's.
Well, compliance review is entirely, I mean, chances are that's gonna come out of compliance review is that you need to, you need, you need to notice.
It's gonna give direction as to which way to go, but if somebody says, no, I wanna go above ground instead of underground, the plan, obviously our regulations and the plans will improve underground, and that would be, if you don't want that, then that opens up the application. You can't take action on anything until it's a real application.
Yeah, especially.
If it's a change like that, that's known.
And after it's already been recorded at the registry of deeds, cause then there's a recording.
No, but I understand what I'm actually going to now is, what are they gonna submit? An entirely new set of plans?
Don't know the answer.
Alright, so I gotta go figure that out.
Yeah, that's. It, it almost becomes what we encounter with changes of users. It's, they, we have one application for site plan or subdivision, but they might say certain things are non-applicable, but it'd have to be a very clear narrative saying we're focusing on this.
Yeah.
And then the board might say, oh, we're gonna carry out, you know, old conditions and stuff like that, except for.
And the site plan, say that, if they, if it was agreed upon, or in the condition that a certain thing was to be a certain way, the building inspector could hold up, could not, could not issue a schedule of law, you know, see, because the, because the conditions weren't met too, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, we need, we'll have to get an answer, and obviously if you could check, maybe, uh, internally.
Yes, that's where I'm gonna go.
If it's still unclear, we can reach out to council.
No, we should be able to figure out internally, but yeah, thank you, yep.
I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow anyways.
Uh, could ask him too.
Last, last thing for me, probably gonna see a lot more kids around, cause I think Co-Brown, I think is done soon, Dover, I'm assuming is finishing up soon, and then Nottingham is finishing up next Thursday, so. I'd like to see more, more kiddos around town, um, as we get into summer, and summer is coming at, at, at here, but it doesn't look like it yet, so. Any, any further information, anybody? No? Motion to adjourn, anyone?
Some of them.
A second.
Motion again, a second by Ms. Mooney, adjourn, all is favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Look at that. May, May tenth.